This is the regular meeting of the Pecosin City Council for Tuesday, October 14th. And if we could all please rise, I'll have the invocation lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for the many blessings we have received in our city. As we enter the fall celebration season and the upcoming holiday seasons, we ask that you keep us mindful of those in need. Lead us to be good neighbors. We ask your presence and for a small portion of your wisdom for those who serve our nation, city, and state. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First, we're very pleased to have a special presentation from the Airport Commission, but I'm going to ask Dave Callis to come up and introduce. Not that we don't know who they are, but Dave, I did that for two reasons. I want to, one, let you introduce Ken from the Airport Commission.
Yes, sir.
Looking forward to his message, but I also wanted to give you about 20 seconds before you do that to plug your seafood festival.
Well, we do have an event, Mayor, this weekend. I appreciate you mentioning. It's hard to do in 20 seconds, but I will make an attempt. We're going to have a wonderful weekend and great turnout, lots of vendors and community civic groups, all combining for what I certainly feel is the best festival in the state of Virginia.
And we agree with you.
And we're looking forward to it. We thank you so much for your support, Mayor. It is also my pleasure this evening to present for you Ken Sprito, Airport Director, Newport News Williamsburg International, as well as Jessica Wharton, Marketing Director. They're both here with us this evening, looking forward to exciting things happening at the airport and some of the great things they're going to tell us about. Thank you.
Welcome, Ken.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, City Manager, appreciate the opportunity to come out here and brief you all on what's happening at the airport. There's never a dull moment in our business.
That's right.
You may have read that somewhere or saw it on the TV, but we're a very dynamic piece to the peninsula, a very important and dynamic piece to the peninsula. But we couldn't do it without Dave's help. Dave is a great guy, as you know, and he sits on RACE Committee and actually we have a meeting next Monday that he reminded me of, as a matter of fact. That's how good he is. But his participation has always been very delightful and very meaningful and professional, so we appreciate his representation and what he brings to the table. As I said, I don't have slides for you today. I wanted to speak in the raw, kind of old school, just talk a little bit about what's going on and certainly answer any questions that you have at any time. Please don't feel shy to ask. But as you know, the airport mainly to most is about commercial air service. That's what most people value the airport as, as a means of getting back and forth to point A and point B, but we're really more than that. And as we move forward with commercial air service, as you know, the industry has been tougher and tougher over the years with mergers and consolidations and just quite frankly makes it very challenging for airports of our size, really airports of any size. You look at bigger airports like Cincinnati and the latest airport to suffer cutbacks is Memphis. These are large airports in large metropolitan areas that have similar problems that we do. Unfortunately, we're experiencing it in a smaller situation that we have geographically, unfortunately, we're positioned in the middle of two other airports in a very large region that obviously can support a lot of service out of Newport News. But the point is, we're managing through some very difficult times that airports and communities have faced for several years now, and I think we do a very good job because even though it's very important to have commercial air service for the citizens and business and military and government to take advantage of, we are also a very, very important economic impact contributor to the area. Our latest economic impact back in 2011, and it's not done often, maybe every five to eight years roughly, the last economic impact was almost $400 million to the economy. So to look back, and I hate to look back, when Air Tram was in the market, it accounted for $150 million of that economic impact. So you can see the substantial impact that low fare commercial service has on the economy, but the other side of that is the wonderful things that we do for the economy in terms of economic development, general aviation, corporate aviation, and commercial development. And we have been working very hard over the last few years to diversify our revenues to make sure that we can sustain those economic dips when airlines decide to shrink like they've been doing over the last several years and move their assets to other areas for more profitable situations. So we continue to move forward with that diversification of revenue and making sure that we look at our property the best possible way of making money. And we just finished our master plan development study, which took about three years to complete. We are the first airport in the United States, we were a pilot program with the Federal Aviation Administration, were the first airport in the United States to actually have a long-term master plan developed with sustainability guidelines that were established by the Federal Aviation Administration. So we're very proud of that because it's the future and no matter how many problems the industry faces with air service, commercial air service, that will work itself out. The economy will catch itself up and sooner or later, new airlines will emerge, existing airlines will expand, and we'll get that corrected. What's really important as well is to balance our revenues and balance our mission and our vision for sustainability across the board. And we're very proud to have that designation with the FAA. It was a strong partnership. They funded it for us in a very non-traditional way with a master plan, and we're now going to start seeing the results of that. We are going to put our plan into motion and start developing our property to be more self-sustainable, not only economically but environmentally as well. We're going to take a look at every aspect of our property to be environmentally conscious and do what's right for the future. Part of that is developing our property in a very smart and sustainable way. It's looking at our business in a smart, sustainable way and partnering with the right people to assist us in doing that and understanding that the airport is a very important part in this economy and supporting it ultimately will lead to better and more air service. But we've got to get through that fear, unknown and doubt, I call it the flood factor, of what the airline industry is going to become. In certain pockets of the United States, you have a lot of expansion, New York, Washington DC, Dallas, but in other areas of the United States, you see a lot of constriction, a lot of reduction. So we're going to get through that. We're going to make sure that we do whatever we can do to keep our financial sustainability as high as we can, and we'll look forward to the future. One of the really cool projects that we're working on right now is partnering, a public-private partnership, to build a new aviation high school, and that's really looking towards the future. It's only a couple of years out, about two years out. We envision a brand-new high school on the south side of the airport, which is where the Smithfield Hangar is, the new Smithfield Hangar is. We envision a brand-new high school over there with high-tech STEM learning availability, but we're going to add an A to that STEM and call it STEAM, okay? Not the traditional STEAM as arts, but A for aeronautics. So we're going to have a much more vibrant, much more attractive, a lot larger facility for the students to thrive because we think it's really important to develop that segment of education, knowing what our dependency is here on the peninsula of military and government and what it produces as well. You know, you have moms and dads that relocate here, they stay here, they retire here, they have kids here, they live here, and sometimes they want to be like mom and dad, and they get hooked into aviation. Well, our high school's been very popular. The high school that exists now operated by the Newport News School District has about 380 students. It's about the second largest in the United States that we know of. The number-one high school that we know of, the largest, is in Seattle. So we're modeling ourselves after that high school, and I think when this is built, the actual, the high school, I think, will be the largest enrolled aviation high school in the United States. So with that momentum, we can build upon the workforce development that starts at the early age in the high schools and then lead it right into college with, you know, we have aviation specialty with Hampton University, and of course, we have the NIA, and we just brought on Liberty University at the airport back in January, and they're planning to expand at the airport, maybe expand into a larger presence with more higher education opportunities. So when we look at the high school level and we look at what's happening at the elementary level, a lot of schools are starting to transition themselves for STEM learning. We can pass that torch on to the students and give them to continue learning through the high school into the higher education, and then, I don't want to say most importantly, but it's what we all strive for, is for them to be born here, go to school here, work here, and live here, and repeat that cycle. So I think what we want to do is foster that through education and allow these students to have career job opportunities here on the peninsula, and with this type of workforce development, we think it could attract some even higher-end manufacturing in terms of aeronautics. So go on for a long time talking about all of our opportunities and vision, but I want you to rest assured that myself, the board, Jessica, and all of our staff are working very hard, day in, day out, to ensure that we do reinstate the level of service that we once had, to provide the residents of Pecosin and the rest of the peninsula with the services that they demand, and at the same time, we're working parallel to ensure our financial stability so that we can weather some of these decreases in the airline industry. So with that, I'm really open to answer any questions or solve any problems that you may have.
Counsel, y'all know y'all are all smiling. I've already asked him, so go ahead.
Well, yeah, People Express, I'm sure that's on top of everybody's mind.
Sure.
I know they had a ton of incentives to come in place, and you said low-cost airfare is viable, as we know. I understand there's a possibility they may be fined up to $600,000 or someone in that neighborhood for not meeting certain criteria they were supposed to meet. I'm just concerned that might be the nail in the coffin for those guys.
Are you talking about the grants that we could? Yes. Give you a little bit of background, and it's tough to really get the whole thing by, or the whole concept by reading it in the paper, hearing it on the news, on TV, but we received back in 2012 what's called a Small Community Air Service Development Grant, okay? The Department of Transportation, the U.S. Department of Transportation has a program, it's a subsidy program, that allows for small communities that have suffered major setbacks in the airline industry to access federal dollars to help subsidize commercial air service to the extent that, you know, you can prove that, you know, you can sustain in your community. We applied for a grant. We actually applied for $2 million. We received $950,000. That was the largest grant amount that was given in that year and still is. This year's awards and last year's awards aren't even close to what we received. So we received $950,000 from the U.S. Department of Transportation. With that, RACE, it was a required match, RACE matched it with $700,000 plus some change. So the initial grant to Vision Airlines, which is the aircraft operator for People Express, was $650,000, and that was granted to them upfront to offset some startup costs, establishing stations, because they announce a lot of cities and you have to prepay fuel and do a lot of things that take a lot of cash. So we funded that upfront, which was 100% eligible for reimbursement through the DOT. But the way the grant is, you know, the match, it's a 57% matching, so, you know, we submit the $950,000 in expenses plus the $700,000 of matching, about 1.6 million total, and then 57% of that is eligible to come back to us, which amounts to about $950,000. So of that $950,000 that we were granted by the DOT, we submitted $650,000, okay, plus some advertising and marketing costs, and so far, we received back $581,000 from the United States Department of Transportation. So we've been, we're out about $70,000 right now. So there's no requirement for them to pay it back since we've received the amount back from the DOT, so it's not a liability on their part. Hope that answers your question.
Ken, a couple of airport questions, Ken.
Sure.
I know that plans continually change and grow, but at one time, there was going to be a parallel runway to 7 and 2-5.
Yes.
At another time, there was going to be an extension of runway 2-2-0.
That's correct.
And then there was going to be an east-west runway, and encroachment of building the hospital over there took away the property for the east-west runway.
Yes.
Okay. Kiln Creek kind of ate up the new terminal. It was going to be off the interstates, okay? And so there's been an encroachment around there affecting the expansion plans of the airport, and they have changed a few times over the years, okay? Are there still plans to extend runway 2-2-0? Norfolk really can't expand any. Patrick Henry, I mean Newport News, has the ability to expand and accept larger, bigger aircraft. That's a bonus for y'all.
Yes. You know, overall, that statement is correct. When you look at Norfolk, you look at Richmond, there's very, very little, if not any, room to expand runway systems at those airports. As a matter of fact, Norfolk is planning a parallel runway, but they have to close down one of their runways permanently to do it because they just have to, and it's going to be an environmental task amongst anything that they've ever seen to really, and it's going to cost hundreds of millions of dollars to do it. But you're right. Patrick Henry Field has the ability to be the region's biggest airport, if the population grows larger, if there's cause and need for it. Now, our master plan always carries development opportunities because we don't know what's going to happen 20, 30, 40 years from now. So we have to carry that development in our master plan. This, however, this master plan, I'm just going to digress for a second. The master plan, we just got approved. It's the first one approved since 1997, okay? So this airport never went through the process successfully to get a new updated master plan since 1997. A lot of things have changed since 1997. So we made some actual, some improvements with this master plan. We actually, the planned parallel runway to runway 7-2-5, which is our main runway, the longest one, that parallel runway was actually shifted to the south, okay, closer to the existing runway, and we shortened it because, as you know, airplanes are getting more efficient, they need less runway to take off and land, so there's no need to build a larger runway of equal size to our existing runway for the future when the airplanes actually need less runway. So what we did is we shifted that runway more south to open up more development opportunities to the north, to keep that from infringing and, you know, keeping from development happening in that quadrant of Newport News. Now runway 2-2-0, which is our smaller runway, it's a crosswind runway, we do have to extend it, but we also have to shorten it first. So we're going to take away some length, and we're going to extend it on the opposite end, which you've driven on old Denby Boulevard or Orianna.
Yeah.
That road will have to be relocated, and the runway will have to shift because when you approach runway seven, you also approach runway two, and they intersect, and it's a very small piece, and I wish I had a picture to fully articulate it to you, but we have to decouple that runway because it is a safety issue. If you remember, Cincinnati about six years ago, I'm sorry, not Cincinnati, Lexington, Kentucky, about six years ago, had a Comair Regional Jet, a Delta connection carrier, take off on the wrong runway in Lexington. All 50 passengers died on the aircraft because it crashed, because it took off on the wrong runway, which is smaller than the pilot thought it was, and because of that, one of the causes to that accident was that the pilot was confused as to what runway he was on because the runways were so close to each other. It was very confusing at the early hour that it was flying. So we had recognized before that accident that that intersection was a safety issue and that we need to decouple those runways to spread them out more, and the only way to do that without encroaching on airspace and existing properties like Walmart and all the other retail establishments around our area was to actually shift runway 2-2-0 towards Orianna Road. That's been approved by the FAA. We just got approval for that. It's going to take some time, I'm working with York County, but essentially, what will happen is that runway will shift even before we do that parallel runway. So there are a lot of things that we have to do on the air side that will take some time and effort. Another one is to extend runway 7-2-5. Runway 7-2-5 is our longest runway. It's at 8,000 feet. We want to take it out to about 9,200 feet. So we're working with the FAA on that as well.
Well, one other little beat to put in your bonnet, okay, is that one thing that you have as an advantage over the Norfolk airport is that you could put in the east-west runway. And in February, March timeframe, when the March winds come in, it gets extremely difficult to land at either one of those airports when the winds get up to 30 knots. And so you still have land area available to go east-west off the end of runway seven and two-five, and if you look at that in your master plan, you might want to give that a little consideration.
We will, absolutely.
Comments? Anybody else?
No.
Okay, Ken, let me, let me.
Sorry for taking so long.
No, that's great. I'll tell you, it's fascinating. As you can tell, we have a couple pilots around.
Oh, you fly?
And, you know, if we could get one of those, if we could get one of those lapel pins for both of our pilots.
This is a throwback now. Can anybody name this airplane from here?
I can't, I can't quite see it, but the.
It's an L-10-11 TriStar.
Okay. So anyway, if you can get a couple of those lapel pins for our pilot residents on campus, that would go a long ways. But the, let me just say, you know, I'm fascinated by what you're doing out there. I love seeing the passion that I've seen from you, no matter where I meet you, you talk about the airport.
Thank you.
And that airport has needed that type of leadership, and I think y'all are it. You know, I think you're doing a great job, and there's always going to be setbacks, but the greatest thing is the financial position of the airport at this point in time, how strong it is, even with all this churn that y'all are going through. So that's the sign of solid leadership.
Thank you.
And we appreciate that. I know our citizens will be thrilled when we get an increase in carriers, whoever that may be, and we hope that, we hope for continued success for peoples. And to be quite honest with you, from their standpoint, there was a couple people that were really down on them, and I said, "Well, you know, they could have flown the next day and just not told you." So, you know, on the backside, you know, appreciate the honesty and appreciate the fact that they are looking out first for safety. So, you know, on the side, you know, good on them for knowing when to say, "Hey, something's up and we need to go back and look at our plan." So, but wish you the best of luck and looking forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you very much.
All right. Come back anytime.
Call on us anytime.
Thank you, Ken.
Thanks.
Really appreciate it.
I'm going to step out of order just for, just a brief second for counsel, and I want, I meant to do this, and I'd said something last time to the Daily Press reporter, and we do have a new reporter reporting for Pecosin. I always like to have the opportunity for them to introduce themselves to the citizens, and soon as she gets done dealing with the airport people over there, then we'll let Johanna Summers come and introduce herself to the citizens and say a few words about how to get in touch with you or what your goals are for reporting on the Pecosin beat.
My name's Johanna Summers. I just started about six weeks ago at the Daily Press. I'm actually from Virginia Beach in Chesapeake, so I'm really happy to be back in the Hampton Roads area, but I went to grad school in Missouri, and then I was in Connecticut for two years covering state government, and so now I'm back here covering local government, York County and Pecosin. There are various ways to get in touch with me. Should I just, I guess, read you my phone number? It's 757-247-4758, and my cell is 757-298-5176. I've said that so many times. And my email is jsummers, so J, S is in Sam, O, M is in Mary, E, R, S is in Sam, S-O-M-E-R-S at dailypress.com. And just one note from a reporter, if you could talk into your mics, that would be very helpful. Some of you, I can't hear over here, and I've been given the wonderful laptop that lasts 19 minutes, so I can't really move. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for special presentations, and we'll move on to the audience for visitors. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address counsel on any issue, now is that time. Seeing none, we'll close the audience for visitors, and we'll move on with the agenda into approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the minutes for the regular meeting of September 22nd, 2014.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. We adopt those, the minutes of the regular meeting on September 22nd. Questions or comments? Not Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, in the work session?
Mayor, I move that we adopt the minutes of the work session of the same day, September 22nd, 2014.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. We approve those also. Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, very well. Now we're into unfinished business, and the first item on unfinished business is an ordinance amending Article One, Section One, Tac Three, and Article Five, Section Five, Tac Two of the zoning ordinance to add a definition of covered peers and adding covered peers to the list of permitted uses in the RS district. This is a second reading, and I think we moved forward with this item last time. Randy, want to have anybody? Do I?
You're available to make any, answer any questions or make the presentation if you'd like, but since it's a second reading, we will await your pleasure, sir.
Very good. So I'll ask counsel if they want to move straight to a motion or if they want anything else.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by revising Article One, General Provisions, Section One, Two, Three, One Through Three, definitions, and Article Five, RS District Regulations, Section Five Through Five Dash Two, permitted uses as it pertains to covered peers.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. We approve that ordinance. Questions or comments on counsel? Okay, seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
We have four items under new business this evening, the first one being a resolution accepting a hazard mitigation grant entitled City of Pecosin, elevation of 10 residential structures and associated funding.
Mr. Mayor, council members will recall last month, a very similar item. The only significant difference besides the date was the denifier number for the grant. I am very pleased to say that we have received, through the hard work of a lot of people on staff, no more so than Evie, but also V Dem, a second elevation grant for an additional 10 homes. Evie, myself, Judy, Teresa, Robin, Ken, and Ellen, and probably someone I've forgotten, I apologize, have been working together and meeting every week to advance the ball on this. So we now have 20 house-raising projects, and we have about 35 months to get them done, and we have a good plan, and we're working it, and we incorporated all of the lessons that we learned along the way with the last grants, and I believe that this process will be very successful for the citizens. We have alerted all the citizens, both of the first group and the second group, of your consideration this evening, and we plan to meet with them in the next week or so to begin that process with them again on this side of the approval. We're here to answer any questions you may have.
Now, counsel, do we want to do the easy part and approve the resolution?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution accepting hazard mitigation grant HMGP-4042-0011 entitled City of Pecosin, elevation of 10 residential structures.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. We approve.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution accepting hazard mitigation grant HMGP-4042-0011 entitled City of Pecosin: Elevation of 10 Residential Structures.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded that we adopt that resolution. I don't want to leave this item without saying thank you to the staff. Tremendous job. We continue to, and, you know, we've had, Randy and I've had a couple meetings talking specifically about the hardening of Pecosin and the hardening being against flooding. This is yet another step in that. One of our, our council's policies as far as moving forward is to make sure that we try to not revisit the type of damage we had many, many years ago again. And this just shows that we continue down that path. So thank you to staff for doing the hard part as we try and take a little credit tonight by just adopting a resolution. So, but thank you for what y'all have done. And thank you for the hours that you've spent on that. Okay, question, other questions or comments by council? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, and the next item under new business is a resolution approving consent order between the State Water Control Board and the cities of Chesapeake, Hampton, Newport News, Norfolk, Pecosin, Portsmouth, Suffolk, Virginia Beach, and Williamsburg, the counties of Gloucester, Isle of Wight, and York, and the James City Service Authority and the Town of Smithfield. There's only one important one in there, and that was Pecosin. Okay? But, so, how would you like to proceed with this?
Mr. Mayor, in a moment, I'm gonna ask Bob to come forward. But one of the first things I heard about when I, when I came here five-plus years ago was the sewer consent order. Bob made sure that I understood it very quickly. And while I'm no expert and he is, and Ellen has become one, this is part of a regional solution to a regional problem. And as you know, over the last couple of years, we have worked through how it should be done and working with council and other councils and boards across the region. We've, we've moved collectively in this effort. I'll let Bob explain what it is. In order to, to move forward ultimately, we need, along with the other jurisdictions, to affirmatively, not with regard to this, change to the consent order by the end of this month, actually, by the, by your next meeting at the absolute latest. I'm not sure about all the jurisdictions. Some of them have this on their agenda this week or in the coming weeks. But thus far, the cities of Williamsburg, Virginia Beach, and Gloucester County have approved this. We certainly recommend it for your approval. But let me let Bob explain it. And before I do, Bob, if you just, one more thing. Know that during the course of this whole idea of whether we should regionalize the system and if so, under what ways, and, and along with this, Bob and Ellen, all the time, Teresa, myself, and Wayne, when needed, joined our counterparts from throughout Hampton Roads and HRSD and the TPO, excuse me, the PDC on this. So lots and lots and lots of people have been on this. And it's really just a huge effort, making sure we're going in the right direction. Something very important.
Very good. Bob?
Mr. Mayor, before, to council, Mr. Wheeler. He summed up quite a bit of it. I was gonna touch on the highlights, I guess. HRSD and the localities have been researching the most practical and cost-effective way to address the regional wet weather portion of the plan. That is, how do we take care of problems when it's heavy rains? Short version. The study resulted in unanimous support for an alternative realization, regionalization approach where HRSD will take responsibility for the regional wet weather capacity. Under this approach, HRSD will assume sole responsibility for the drafting, funding, and implementing of the regional wet weather management plan without assuming ownership of the locality's assets. Each jurisdiction will maintain their own. What that means is HRSD can identify the larger problems and address them first. They may come into our jurisdiction and work on something. They would repair it, we would own it. This order serves to finalize the locality's commitment to the implementation and following of their maintenance, operation, and management plan, or MOM plan. This part of the order assures that we will adhere to our plan, which we submitted to them and they approved, which means we still gotta fix what's broken and maintain what we got. That's the very short version.
We would expect to do that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, so basically what you're saying is that if they see, and we've got one of the younger systems.
That's correct.
On the peninsula, so, you know, the bottom, we're probably less prone to this type of weakness where heavy rains infiltrate the city, but not completely averse to it because we do have some older sections.
Correct.
So basically what you're telling me is that, at least the way I understand it, HRSD will help or perform modifications to those parts of our system if they deem necessary. I think they're gonna go focus in Hampton. I think they're gonna go focus in Newport News where the oldest systems are.
Correct.
And try and cut down, in other words, $100,000 spent here versus $100,000 spent on a system that's been in place since the 40s or 50s, is, they're gonna be more money better spent in those localities.
Correct.
And so it's gonna solve their problem the highest, solve their problem the greatest.
Other alternative was for HRSD to construct larger facilities. And that is grossly cost ineffective.
So they're going into pinpoint locations within various cities, all of these cities, and spend some HRSD dollars overall to do repairs within that system. We will continue to maintain that system as we have done.
Absolutely.
So for our citizens, it should be really, they should never know what's going on.
That's correct. The savings would be down the road where we're not spending a lot of money and HRSD's not spending as much. And their costs are our costs also.
Can you tell me how they are, how are they deciding which problems to tackle?
Part of the initial plan is everybody has done dry weather, wet weather flows and all this reports, and we were all gonna do it individually. So they have that information.
Okay.
They will do additional monitoring. They've already proposed a couple additional monitoring sites in Pecosin to see exactly, and just to verify our information.
So we've submitted areas within our city.
That's correct.
So it sounds like a great, great team effort and appreciate all the time that's taken you, I'm sure, to, to work with all of the localities and hammer through what I see is a very positive agreement. So I'm thrilled from the consent order thing, that all the horrors of the consent order that we heard five years ago. Right?
Okay, sir.
So, any questions, or Bob? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving the consent order between the State Water Control Board and the cities of Chesapeake, Hampton, Newport News, Norfolk, Pecosin, Portsmouth, Suffolk, Virginia Beach, and Williamsburg, the counties of Gloucester, Isle of Wight, and York, the James City Service Authority, and the Town of Smithfield.
Okay, motion made and seconded that we approve that resolution. Any final comments or questions? Not Judy, please?
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. And again, thank you to all the time that it took to put, for staff to work on that with all those localities. No, no small feat to work with that many localities.
Counting, counting the regionalization study, probably the most complex thing that I've ever worked on in 26 years.
Very good. Sounded, sounded easy, but it's not, for, again, for us to pass the resolution is the easy part. All right, the next item under new business, resolution authorizing the submission of a Virginia Port Authority grant application for construction of a breakwater at Messick Point. And Randy, you'd like to just give a-
I would be pleased to, sir.
Okay.
Another, one of the things I heard about when I first got here, consented, attended the first, then Seafood Festival, and then was the need for breakwater at, at Messick Point. It's been in your comprehensive plan for some time. It's also in your CIP. As you know, through the course of the recession, discretionary CIP dollars have been very difficult to come up with. But we've never stopped looking for means to help pay for that project, which is, again, contained in both documents. Charity has worked to identify a potential grant source, Virginia Port Authority, which, if we are successful, could provide up to 75% funding for the construction of a breakwater at Messick Point. We're asking today for your consent to go ahead and move towards application. I would remind you, if, if we weren't clear, the numbers here are illustrative of orders of magnitude. They are not, they're not by any stretch set in stone. But with your consent, we'll move forward with this. It does require a 25% local match. And what I've suggested here for you is that the, the council could, if it wished to, use the money from the recent sale of land at Messick Point off of Cove Road specifically as the means of funding the local support. It's not been appropriated to another purpose and it has the added benefit of reinvesting proceeds from Messick Point into Messick Point. So I think it's a good marriage of, of that available funding and, and this project, which, again, has been on your books for several years. If, if you authorize estimate for it, we'll complete the grant and submit it on time. It gets submitted late first quarter of 2015, will be decided into late second quarter of 2015. And if we are successful, would be something that would become available in the third quarter, July 1st, of the year 2015. And of course, we would be back to in the intervening time with an appropriation action. That's not what this is.
So basically, just to find out for council what we're doing here, we're basically just saying, we know they're going to apply for a grant. We think it's a really good idea to apply for the grant. And later on, we may be asked to pay for a match and we're good with that. And it sounds like Randy's already got an idea where the source of income, which I thoroughly think is a good thing to reinvest Messick money into Messick Point from sale of city property down there into that, is a, is a good, is a wise use of the city's assets. So with all that said, is there a motion to move forward with this resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of an application for an aid to ports grant for construction of a breakwater at Messick Point.
Second.
Any motion made and seconded that we approve this resolution and move forward with applying for a grant? I think it's a wonderful idea. Are there any questions or comments by council?
Only question I have, since we only have the one bid, Randy, would the final grant be based on actual bids?
Absolutely. Well, we're, we don't have any bids. What we have is a, is an informal estimate. We would go through the formal process, absolutely. And the level of contemplated expenditure would be such that we would come back here for contract approval following appropriation. So this is really just the conceptual jumping off point and we will be back on at least two occasions if we are successful appropriation and recommended contract award.
I understand. Okay, a motion made and seconded. Any questions, any further questions? Not Judy, please?
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, very well. And then finally, under new business, is a resolution recognizing and commending the Peninsula Agency on Aging for 40 Years of Service. I don't think I'll have a problem getting a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution in recognition of the Peninsula Agency on Aging Incorporated.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that we approve this resolution. Will we be recognizing them at a, I'd like to bring them in and, and basically thank them publicly if we could at some, at some point in time. But motion made and seconded.
Mr. Mayor, this, this resolution will be displayed at their 40th anniversary party.
Excellent.
Which is October 25th.
Okay. And I, and I understand that we won't-
And we can get it back and give it to them again if you'd like.
Well, I just want to thank them. I, you know, they can get the resolution before that. Okay? And I appreciate that. Thank you for that clarification. All right, if no other questions, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Comments of the city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have two things this evening. First, I just want to shamelessly plug Dave's Seafood Festival again, in case you haven't heard about it, and thank in advance the, I'd say small army, but it's really a medium-sized army of volunteers, staff members, vendors, community service groups, churches, and all the people that work together with our citizens to make this such a great event. And, and I would like to also thank our citizens. I know that, that not everybody participates, but everybody, well, almost everyone does, but everyone in the city takes note of the fact when 40,000 to 50,000 people come to town for a weekend and it does cause some minor inconveniences and other things. And, and rather than getting down about that, people just work through it with a smile and get their way there. And so I just want to say thank you to everyone for that. And also, I wanted to say, I saw a really great note, discussion at Seafood Festival last night on Channel 3, News Channel 3, and I wanted to tell them how much I appreciated that. And lastly, last week I had the, the honor to represent the city and city council at the Virginia Municipal League Annual Conference. Last week was a first for us. The city of Pecosin won an achievement award last week. It's the first one in city's history. And as I had related to you previously, in my first year or so here, a couple of councilmen came back from a BML conference and they were talking about the award ceremony. And they remarked, "It sure would be great if we could get recognized for some of the great things we're doing in Pecosin."
So Bob can zoom in on it.
The city received the BML Outstanding Achievement Award for its communications.
Hold on, they can't see it. I'm sorry, Randy.
No problem. I like it.
Mr. Henry?
We received the Outstanding Achievement Award for our communications effort, which is a competitive award for all the cities and towns in Virginia. And what it was, as council knows, was on our economic development, marketing, and rebranding idea, which is something that Dave, and Charity, and Gretchen, and Angela, and myself, and you, and countless other members of staff all worked together on, and it's reflected throughout the city. And you'll see a nice dose of it this weekend, and we were recognized for that effort, and it's, we stood out among a very good field, and I was very proud to accept it on your behalf.
Thank you, Randy, and well said, and thank you to all the staff. I know that in particular, you know, the Economic Development Office, I'll just call them that, and of course, you don't get to be the Economic Development Office in Pecosin without also being Parks and Rec, and the field maintainers, and the, you know, but thank you for what you've done, and that's quite a win, and I felt like that whole office really threw in together, along with the city manager's office, to come through that and really do it right. So thank you so much for that. Bud?
Yeah, just a few comments. I'd like to welcome Joanna Summers to the city of Pecosin. We're glad to have her here with us, and to thank Randy, Judy, and their staff for their great work in the residential raising projects, and include Bob for his efforts working with the State Water Control Board. The city of Pecosin is indeed fortunate to have the employees working for the city that they have, the people that I just mentioned, and others right here in this audience, are truly outstanding in their job. They do the work of twice that number of people, and they do it mostly because they enjoy their work and they enjoy the city of Pecosin, and we benefit from that. So thank you to all of y'all.
First off, I wanted to mention, some people had inquired about the bulky drop-off that normally take, would normally take place this coming Saturday, but since it's the Seafood Festival, I wanted to make sure everybody knows that that's been delayed by one week. Also, the, I'd like to invite everybody to the Kiwanis barbecue booth at the Seafood Festival. Seafood Festival's a great place for some barbecue. And also on behalf of Kiwanis, the, one of the fundraisers they're having this year is a dinner show on Sunday, November the thirtieth. It's the Sunday immediately following Thanksgiving, so if you will be full up on turkey, you can go to the Briar Patch. We have tickets for sale in advance. It's a fundraiser, and it's twenty-five dollars per person, but get in touch with Becky at the Briar Patch, or me, or any other Kiwanian if you're interested in a ticket.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Councilman Vernal?
Well, I think Bud pretty well covered the waterfront. I certainly want to commend the staff for all their hard work in obtaining these grants and looking for other grants, because that's bringing tens of thousands of dollars into the community that doesn't come directly out of our local taxpayers' pockets, and it's certainly a real tribute to the hard work that they're all doing. So appreciate that, and looking forward to the Seafood Festival. Dave arranged good weather. Thank you.
Councilman Green? Just like to report that the Seafood Festival workboat races were a great success. From my estimation of the crowd, I would say between nine hundred and a thousand people. I'd like to thank all of our sponsors. We once again raised enough money to cover all the expenses and then some. I'd like to thank Parks and Rec for their help in helping us put all that together. A huge thank you to the two co-sponsors, Crosby, Forrest, and Henry Freeman. They put in hours and hours and hours and make this thing a great success in their committee. And just a thank you to everybody that showed up. It's sixty-three boats.
Wow.
And it went very smooth. If you can have workboat races that are smooth, a lot of the watermen came up to Crosby and Henry and thanked them for how well it went, so it's getting better all the time. And I really thank them for putting on such a great, great event.
Very good. And did you cook burgers again this year?
No. Told you we got away from that. We have real vendors now. Real food.
Bet the Kiwanis would do barbecue. Yeah, that's nice.
Hey, Councilman Ayer?
A couple things, and it can't be overemphasized enough, the grant money coming to these homes being lifted, so now there's twenty homes that will be impacted by this. And the big thing about this, it's not just these families that are having their homes lifted, but it's their extended families and their friends that don't have to worry about their family members during these types of storms. That's amazing that that's happening, to these folks that have done that and made that happen, kudos to you. The airport commission led some of those folks who are here, and the People's Express thing is really big to this area, and I'm hoping they can keep that thing going for us. As far as the Seafood Festival, there'd be tons of vendors out there. Of course, one near and dear to my heart is Paws. They'll be out there, but the one reason I'm bringing up Paws, because I want to have a chance to bring it up between the next, now and the next meeting. Two members of our community, husband and wife, have donated a fifty-seven Chevrolet convertible to them to be donated, raffled off basically silent bid, and giving away half the proceeds are good to their church and half will go to Paws. So it's a fifty-seven Chevrolet convertible, beautiful car, needs a little bit of work. There'll be some, you'll see some things on Paws' Facebook page and our Facebook page as well at the dealership, but we'll be displaying the car. So it's a lot of great causes out there, the Seafood Festival, Dave and those guys, we know how great they do every year, and I look forward to a big success again.
Okay, I think you've covered everything except for, is there a motion on good weather for the Seafood Festival, or, you know? Oh, I'm sorry.
Dave's got it covered.
Dave's got that covered.
He sure is.
Dave, you and your staff, especially all the members of your staff, thank them for what they're about to go through, because I know this is stressful couple weeks for them. In addition to that, we've had lots of meetings with lots of economic development prospects, including in the last twenty-four and the last, today at lunch. So in addition to getting ready for that, they're also continuing to push that for us. The festival itself, thirty-fourth year, next year, maybe we'll bring fireworks back next year. But, but, you know, it's a great happening in Pecosin. We all look forward to it. We'll all see each other there, I know. It's a great weekend of fun, and it's a great weekend to showcase the quality of life that we have here. So, and that's really a tribute to everybody, but I want to thank staff, and when I say staff, I mean the entire staff, whether they are policemen, firemen, public works, they work for the school division or whatever. Y'all make this city shine. It's really not about the six or seven of us. We'd like to make sure that y'all recognize that this city is good because y'all are excellent at what you do. So thank you for that. You make us look good, you make us proud, and I think we'll be talking nothing but great outcomes in the next week. And I think we've got one more council meeting before state of the city address, right?
Yes, sir.
So we'll plug that then and let everybody know what's coming up there. But appreciate everything tonight. Let's get out of here. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Before you do that, may I make one more comment?
Sure.
Okay. I want to say something that Henry said that I meant to say, and I didn't. I want to thank Ken Sparedo for him being here tonight. He is doing an excellent job at the airport. I'm one of the two people that spent some time there.
I could tell.
He has, he does have a difficult job, but I think the staff is making a difference. The airport has a lot of opportunity, but they're in very challenging economic times, and they're working hard to do it. He didn't have to go in here tonight and make that presentation, but I'm glad that he did.
I appreciate that. I thought it was great. Okay, motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Vicki, please, I'm sorry, Judy, please?
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Ayer?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Sir?